For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the sort of public's fullness and fairness, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman.
Here.
Gariga.
Here.
Hallarin.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis. Moranti.
Here.
Nisan.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Volo.
Presentee Pedro.
Here.
Honored present.
Tonight's motion is dispensed with the reading of the minutes of February 28th placed on the file. Any introductions? Rob, in a second. Mal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, communications. Once again, we have a letter from, um... Oops. Sorry. I got ahead of myself. A motion to dispense with the reading of the city treasurer's report as of February 28th and placed it on the file. You have a motion, Irene, second. Shershah. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, which are on your desks. May I have a motion in second place, committee reports on the file. Shershah, second. Tiffany. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now for communications. We have, uh, once again, we have a letter from, uh, Doe. Evitable?
Yes.
Should be on the pile, right? Anyways. April 5th, inviting us, April 5th, to a ceremony near the hospital for the Safety Tree Project and recognizing all those who have died during the pandemic.
Do you have a sign?
Oh, sorry. May I have a motion and a second to receive the communication and place it on the file. Tiffany. Calvin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the list of bills is on your desks. Any questions? The council? Oh, all right. Ammon Magan.
Ammon Magan is the company that puts the vandalized PSN, the new house.
Scott. Whose errand is it, Reese?
It should be, um, Historic Preservation Secretary.
Is that a monthly fee or...?
That's, uh, I don't know, ten million.
Um, it's five, sixty dollars.
There's no further discussion. Should I have a motion and a second, please? Tiffany, second. Um, if you want. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oh, sorry. Oh. Give me a roll call vote.
Alderman.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis. Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
Next resolution. These are resolutions that we talked about before. We are recording commissioner's meetings. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro. Carrie.
The next resolution is a resolution supporting universal rent stabilization and control. But before we vote, I want to remind you this, to not institute rent control or stabilization here in Hudson, it is to encourage our state government to allow us to make the decision for ourselves in the future. We have a couple other resolutions related to that as well. Any opposition? Yes?
Tom, so after our meeting, and we had gotten that follow-up email with the update on, um, the support from, um, from Dee Barrett, I dug into the resolutions a little more, both the Senate and the Assembly resolutions, and I reached out and spoke to, um, spoke to Dee Barrett today. And I guess I'll just give you some of my findings of what I'd like to suggest. So, the three Senate resolutions for preferential rent vacant, both vacancy bonus and vacancy decontrol, were referred to the Housing and Construction Committee, so that's where that sits right now. I think that happened like at the end of January or middle of February. Good Cause Addiction was referred to the Judiciary Committee. And then the four Assembly, uh, bills were sent to the Housing Assembly Committees where they're being worked on. So there, I actually pulled the bills, I have them, they're being redlined, there's some green additions being done. Three of them are specifically still talking about New York City. The fourth one, Good Cause Addiction, talks about New York State. Um, and speaking with the Assembly member today, um, her chief of staff said that these bills expire to 15, and that, um, right now, they're in the middle of budget. And I would just like to make a recommendation for us to have a little more time to research the bills and get to a more formal language in the bill as to what we're actually, uh, voting on for a resolution. I mean, with table, I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution.
On paper, tidling the resolution?
Could I?
I'm sorry, you can talk first.
Yeah, I'd like the general to say something out there. Regardless of the future shape of rent control laws or stabilization in New York City, I think we have nothing really to lose here to voice our support for the wider community. It does feel the stress of, uh, increasing rent and income inequality. I think just symbolically, it says a lot if we give our voice to people who feel unstable, unstable where they live and fearful, and I think we need to listen to that. And granted, uh, this is going to be a long process in Albany if it happens. And we should be supportive of a way of, uh, legislation that would address the problem. I'm a renter personally, in this region, and, uh, it's a phenomenon that's happening here. It happens across the state, so I think we do nothing but show our constituents that we care about.
Irene?
John, I'm sure you, any of us who would vote to table it to understand more, want to understand more about, about the whole issue. And some of what we found in what little, you know, reader we've been able to do is that it starts out well and doesn't always work out well, and that's, that's in big areas. So I don't, I hope that voting to table or wanting to know more about this isn't perceived as not being empathetic. And the contrary, we're willing to spend a lot of time. I think we all might end up where, where you are, you know?
I just, you know, through all due respect, I just think we have nothing to lose in voting for something like this if it is truly a statement of intent rather than an actual, well, like it's a court for a bill. So understood that in the particulars of, you know, the hypothetical of a rent stabilization law passed in New York State or rent control, it's going to undergo a huge amount of process before it even gets there to the floor in Albany. So just to be able to, we'd say, to be in line with the general goals of types of rent stabilization or expansion of rent control, again, I just feel, you know, if the wider council decides to table it, fine, as long as we work on it, but I would say like just making a vote now to support something doesn't also cause any pain or problem for us.
True.
Hold on, Shershah.
Yeah, well, my thing is like, I understand it's the state level right now. Also, it came to, in our council, my service to send this to the legal committee to, for more discussion.
Okay, Tiffany?
Well, talking about learning and when we learn about things, that's the whole reason we have committees every month. Um, this was discussed, uh, last year, January, uh, you know, during the committee, and it's a continuous conversation because it is a problem that we continuously see in, in Hudson, and it's growing. This resolution is in support and letting citizens know of Hudson that we support them and we want to see them remain here and not push out of the city. Also, it's also stated in committee and supported by committee members, that's why it's here on the floor. But it was stated that the law is expiring, and that's the whole point of doing this resolution. Because it's going to expire, and it was only for New York City. So by giving this to our state members, we are telling them, yes, we support you in doing this. Yes, we know there's work to do, that's why they're there. But this is letting them know that the work they're doing is not in vain. You know, the work they're doing is not for nothing. The work that they're doing is supporting the people that are renters, like many people here in the city of Hudson. This is not committing anyone, you can always do your research, you can always learn, you're always invited, like the public, to the Housing Transportation Committee meetings. But this resolution is a statement, it's a statement to the public, it's a statement to our constituents and to our, uh, elected officials of the state who's already supported by this legislation.
Can I have a vote on the motion to table it first and then move?
Calvin.
Oh, okay, you're sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a comment. Yeah, I concur with, um, a lot of the sentiments that have been shared. I too am a renter. Um, I've dealt with displacement in the past, um, due to, you know, my family of five not being able to, to find adequate housing, um, or housing that we could afford. Um, so this resolution is something that resonates with me personally. And, um, I think this issue also calls for the need to appoint a housing commissioner. A lot of these issues have been ongoing for, for, uh, quite, quite a while. And, um, you know, based upon constituents that I've spoken to and third Ward and others, uh, this is something that they, um, feel is necessary, um, and I concur with that. And, uh, yeah, ultimately, I think, you know, I would vote, you know, um, I would vote, you know, to, to pass this bill, you know, just because of the, you know, comfort and relief it could provide for some folks. This isn't a bill that will, um, solve our housing issue, um, in my opinion, but, um, I do believe it's a, it's a start, it's a step in the right direction in having this conversation and learning more about it, um, and addressing the concerns of our constituents.
So there's a motion on the, on the, um, floor to table it. Can I have a roll call vote on that motion?
Alderman.
Yes.
Gariga.
No.
Hallarin.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Lewis.
No.
Moranti.
Well, I think you guys speak. So I realize the issue of, you know, the housing, um, living trenches on the daily basis. Um, I sat on Housing Task Force. And at no time this came up in the Housing Task Force as being a remedy to the situation that we have going on currently in the city. As Calvin said, I think some of our energy should be put toward a housing coordinator. I personally would like, I've been trying to do the, there was a census that brought up into the committee two weeks ago in the resolution form, to educate myself in terms of what Rob was looking at. And I just don't have enough information, um, that I would like to, to make this decision. So, um, so yeah.
Thank you. Nisan.
No.
Rosenthal.
Uh, no to table.
Sarah.
Yes, to table.
Volo.
Um, I received a letter from, that was sent from Dee Barrett last, that was, that was said to be sent from Dee Barrett last week. I noticed that there was no letterhead or signature, so I forwarded that to Dee Barrett just to verify and confirm that it was from her, and then to realize that it was not confirmed, that she had not signed on to it by that time. So I believe that tabling is just means that there's more investigation work to be done and more due diligence to be done, so I am going to vote yes to table. I vote, because I think we should decide on this tonight, I vote no. So, the resolution stands. Can we have a roll call vote on the resolution, please?
Alderman.
No.
Gariga.
Yes.
Hallarin.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Moranti.
Because I would like more information, I, at this point, would abstain.
Nisan.
Yes.
Rosenthal.
Yes.
Sarah.
I'll abstain.
Volo.
No.
Presentee Pedro.
Once again, I think there's a profound misunderstanding of what this resolution is. It does not commit the city of Hudson to rent control. It commits, it suggests to the state that we get the right at some point to decide the issue of rent control for ourselves, and as a confirmed localist, I vote yes.
Carrie.
Okay, next resolution, authorize the transfer of funds from, uh, State Retirement Fund to the Social Security Fund. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman.
Yes.
Gariga.
Yes.
Hallarin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Moranti.
Yes.
Nisan.
Yes.
Rosenthal.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Volo.
Yes.
Presentee Pedro. Carrie.
Uh, next resolution, authorize the transfer of fund financial services related to the firehouse lease. Roll call vote, please.
First of all, what, what are those financial services?
It's the audit.
Who's the accountant?
Good question. I think it's the accountant hired by, um...
The leaseholder or leaseholder?
It was, um, always, I don't know if it's still that, when it hired, like, the leaseholder.
They used, they used someone locally in the past as a...
It seems that they were using someone for a while, but they also used their account, used their regular account, so it's a new company that just went past, so investigate this more.
Well, finance has, I think, no, the Finance Committee, I think. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman. Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lewis. Moranti.
Yes.
Nisan.
Yes.
Rosenthal.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
Volo. Presentee Pedro.
Next resolution, accepting on behalf of the Parker Youth, a, um, contribution of nine thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents from the Polar Plunge Institute. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman.
Yes.
Gariga.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lewis.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Oh, I just wanted to thank everyone that was involved in Polar Plunge, uh, Polar Plunge, once again. And, um, I would encourage folks to keep the energy going and come out and meet some of the youth who benefit from these donations. I think, you know, bridging that, that gap between the donation and the youth and services that it will provide for is important for both the community and the youth to be informed about. So just in, you know, good spirit, I would encourage folks just to come out and support the youth. Uh, aye. Sorry.
Moranti.
Yes.
Nisan.
Yes.
Rosenthal.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro.
No vote. I would like to thank, um, the two members of the council who actually dove. Dove, is that the word? Dived.
Fun.
Rob Brugdan and the president. We have another nine thousand, ninety-two dollars and forty-seven dot cent donation to the, um, Hudson Fire Department, also from the Polar Plunge. Can I roll call, roll call vote, please?
Alderman.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Calvin.
Moranti.
Yes.
Nisan.
Yes.
Rosenthal.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro. Carrie.
Okay, the new resolutions. Tom?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can I quickly just also thank two aldermen, aldermen who actually did a lot for the actual logistics of the project.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dominic and Rich Volo, Rich Volo and Dominic and Moranti.
Those are the two.
Sorry. In case you're wondering what to say, so he's not jumping in the room. The next resolution is calling on the New York State Legislature to pass the Discovery for Justice Reform. Now, has this, this been done before, may I vote for that?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So can I have an introduction in a second? Tiffany. Shershah. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis. Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo. Presentee Pedro.
No vote.
Carrie.
The next, um, resolution authorizes the city treasurer to transfer funds within the Pellet Works and Cemetery Accounts. This has been... Oh, sorry. 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 Number eight, resolution is reappointing Dale Schaefer as a member of the Conservation Advisory Council. I guess, this doesn't really, how does this work with the new, this didn't really go before. I guess the Conservation Advisory Council will put it forth. Do you need, how about, could you all just, could I have an, uh, oral vote? All in favor of this, say aye. To go forward.
Aye.
And now may I have an introduction in a second? Rob. And Kamal. And now, may I have a roll call vote?
Alderman.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis. Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro. Carrie.
So now we have the resolution, which has already been passed by finance, authorizing the city treasurer to transfer funds within the Pellet Works and Cemetery Accounts for fifteen years, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. May I have an introduction and a second? Tiffany and Shershah, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro. Carrie.
And lastly, we are, once again, asked to adopt the city's unbound policy. This also passed through the Finance Committee this evening. May I have an introduction and a second? Shershah and Rob, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman.
Aye.
Gariga.
Aye.
Hallarin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis. Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presentee Pedro. Carrie.
One bit of business before we open up the meeting. The, if anyone is interested in becoming a member of the city's Industrial Development Agency, known as the IDA, um, we're now looking for someone to join from the community. What it, it puts you on a, a committee that gets to decide pilots and a couple other things. It's, uh, it's not very sexy, but it's a way of being involved. So if you're interested, please write to me, captain prez@city, at some, at the word, or let me know. I'm sorry, what? Oh. Rob.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any stipulation of presidency?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I'm a city resident, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm a city resident. Please. If you know somebody, please tell them and let us know. I have one other announcement. Oh. Oh, that's right. Oh, you can write Tiffany here, since she's the chair, for that, you became the chair. Last February, we allocated funds because, um, at the time, the pending Calaruso, um, application for the dock went into litigation, and we owed money to the engineering firm. I'm happy to announce that now that things are back on track, we've refunded that money. So that's...
What does that mean? So for a year, they were not paying the bill that they were obligated to pay as part of their fee?
It kind of means that, but they...
So they didn't pay for, what do you mean that they're obligated to pay?
Right.
That's part of the reason, well, that's in violation of code?
Sort of, because that code was a revision that came maybe after that?
Did it?
Yeah, I'm not sure of that. I think it came after it. That was the flaw that Steve Dunn identified in the code, that we didn't have a mandatory payment for that. In any case, it's been paid.
So for an entire year, they were in arrears for the city, basically? So we were, we were paying for it?
Get up the interest on that, it's a hundred percent.
No, I know, but it's more about what it means in principle to the process.
Point taken. Lastly, a bit of information there. The mayor has been looking into either a, uh, because I've been asked by a lot of people about the dock for the summer, whether we're going to have, uh, an RFP for someone to manage the dock or, uh, appoint a Harvard Master, and that's, should be done by the, uh, end of this month. A decision will be made. So if you're interested, or you have constituents who are interested in what's going to happen with the dock this, this coming summer, that's where we are. Now, I open up to the council first for new business. Anything you'd like to raise? The public? Rinda or... Rinda first.
Just have a quick comment, I know your Robert's Rules of Order are handy there. And, uh, they're not handy?
No.
I think when people abstain, they have to abstain for a reason of conflict, not because they're... They either vote yes or no, as far as I understand. So when you abstain, I don't think it's, uh, not correct to just abstain. You either vote yes or no. Unless you have a relationship with, uh, some reason that you're related to this bill or you, you work for the company, you are supposed to vote yes or no.
Question, and I will check it out and... Anyone else, did you want to answer first?
Yeah.
No, sorry.
We can do it together. First and foremost, I want to thank the council for passing...
Um, first and foremost, I want to thank the council for passing the Discovery Reform Act. We're about probably one day out from the most comprehensive passage of criminal justice reform that this state has ever seen. I spent my day in Albany lobbying for that. Secondly, I want to speak to Housing Justice for All, because before my colleague Rebecca took over, I was leading at work in this area. Um, at the end of the day, um, whether you see this bill or that, that bill, because of the timeline being June 16th, the final bill will be a part of a massive negotiation that may not even look like what we see right now. It's called the big ugly, the last day of the legislature, that will be a part of a bill. So, it's just, right now what you're doing is a testament to what we believe here. And I heard at the last meeting, folks saying that people don't have, um, issues around their rent, like people are being priced out, like there's whole communities that aren't here, there's people who I grew up with who aren't here, their, their parents aren't here, their, their kids can't afford to stay here. That's a fact. And I thank those council members who were courageous enough to stand in the ste- testament that we want people to be here. We want people to have safe, affordable housing, you know, Housing Justice for All. So I thank you guys who voted yes on that.
And so to pick up on, on my dear friend, uh, and colleague, yes, I want to thank, um, the council. The bills will shift slightly. I was in Albany all day today, meeting with, um, assembly members and senators about this legislation. But all of the legislation is meant to address the housing crisis that exists in every corner of the state. And it was really perfectly said here that what your resolution did was, in its entirety, send a message to Albany saying, we support you adding a tool to the toolkit of localities that they can choose to use or not choose to use. And so that issue can be muddied and, you know, attempted to be distracted, but at the end of the day, that's what your resolution was. It was a call on our state government to say, we support the notion that local communities need more options and need protections for the tenants in their communities, and we want you to add options for them to utilize if they want to, and they don't have to utilize them if they don't want to. So for those members that voted yes, as, as we fight across upstate to add protections for people that do not live in New York City, I from the bottom of my heart thank you.
Tiffany.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to also add, and thank you for lobbying, um, on behalf of the people for the, uh, discovery bill and to let the council know Rochester was first and we're second on the support of this bill. And Yonkers, Albany and Westchester County will be bringing it up on their council next as well.
And once again, you know, um, I was requested to start a conversation about this, and we will, if it, if it gets passed, rent control will not happen automatically, we'll have the conversation here. And it'll be, you know, fully informed and that's what we really want. So it's really just, if it gets passed, it'll allow us that conversation. It doesn't, it doesn't install rent control or rent stabilization immediately in any way.
But it does bring hope to the people that we will fight for it, we will support it and.
Sends a message to Albany, yeah.
No more comments, oh, go ahead.
Just one question for Rebecca, is there, we have, um, the vacancy law, is there anything that we can do as a council legally, you know, through the legal committee, that we can start the process to protect, you know, with, with, you know, the rent, uh, protections for the renters here at council level that we should be starting now?
There are. There are local resolutions, and I can give you examples of them, um, that municipalities have, um, written and passed that provide, um, local housing relief and tenant protections that are separate and apart from state level legislation. And I am more than happy, um, to work with Hudson if that's something they're interested in pursuing.
You could come to Alderman's Housing and Transportation meeting.
I would love to.
And I, and I think maybe at the same time, maybe entertaining legal and to see where we can go legally and I'd ask the legal committee to, and John can invite you there too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience?
Tom, I have a.
I'm sorry.
Not to put off the public here, um, the code was amended last January, so it's over a year that the amendment code dealing with applicants or in areas of payment. And so regardless if they've been longer than a year, I mean, the lawsuits came about in, like, the fall of 2017, early summer, so it's not too long after that that the legislation's passed here. So I think as a wider discussion at the plan board or here about the attitude of applicant towards obligations from cities probably will be overdue.
Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, well, one comment, I mean, the assessments are, I'm surprised no one has brought this up. Uh, the assessment set are going on right now are really, people are in a panic and they're scared and they're in a great, um, there's a, speaking of fear, there's a tremendous amount of fear going on right now. And homeowners, the people who have been here for many, many years are being fearful that they're going to lose their homes because they cannot pay these amazing or outrageous assessments that they're receiving in the mail. Uh, we have Airbnb issues that we've been dragging our feet on, and I believe that this is part of what's going on, the investments, the trans dumping, like emptying buildings and making, uh, speculations on real estate and flipping things is where, what we're seeing right now and the prices are pushing our communities out. So what you see today in Hudson, I would say in the next five years, you'll have a very different city. So I think we really need to address this housing issue and get control of the Airbnbs sooner or later before we, we're really way behind the curve, so John and Rich, I hope that comes up quickly. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tresha.
Yeah, I was gonna mention something, uh, polarizing the management about which is taxes and bill is increasing, like yesterday, I believe you guys were there, one of my Bengali, uh, husband was questioning to that guy, like some people are on the budget.
Last night at.
Last night.
There was a presentation by Gar and our assessor, which was open to the public.
Right, so he was, uh, mainly he was asking about some people are on the budget and, and like, you know, what is the tax right now? And is their budget, they are paying their mortgage tax, all bills and stuff, when tax, the price bill you goes up, automatically tax will be goes up. When it's gonna go up, how they gonna afford that? Then why is the effort, uh, like, you know, for them? And number two, uh, also, like, you know, is, is the whole community is really, uh, you saw yesterday, last night in there, like, you know, shaping about, like, you know, uh, housing problems, City of Hudson and Bucha Airbnb is like, you know, growing up in City of Hudson. I believe, I'm not against Airbnb, but I believe it's not to be, needs to be like, you know, uh, control of limited, I'm asking to the council, it can, like, you know, do something about it, has the law or something about the Airbnb. Another word is for Airbnb reason, if it is growing like that, why we are losing a, like, you know, people from City of Hudson, and while, uh, we are decreasing people in City of Hudson, we're gonna lose the, like, you know, state grant. I understand we are getting some tax, but think about, like, if we, if we lose the people from City of Hudson, citizen is coming down, we're gonna lose the, like, you know, grant from the state. So I'm asking to the council to make a decision or make a law about limited the Airbnb. And also one more thing, uh, about, I want to talk, recently we all, uh, hear the news about the New Zealand happened. I'm asking to the council, also, uh, police committee is in here too, uh, it's really scary right now. Personally, I'm a Muslim, I go for Jumma prayer every Friday now, mosque only, not me, like, you know, Dewan is in here, Abdul's right here, and all other Muslim people go to the Jumma prayer, and while we pray for the Jumma prayer, it's really silent. Everybody's praying, nobody watching, nobody. So, which I saw the video in New Zealand happen, if somebody was outside, honestly, it was not a that big mess. So I'm asking if it is possible only, like, you know, 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM, one hour, if we can get, like, you know, uh, police in around our mosque, also any other prayer place in City of Hudson, if it is, uh, committee or community thing, they need a, like, you know, law enforcement protection, if council can, or police committee can, like, you know, do something about that, I'm asking. Thank you.
Is that every day?
Not every day. I'm asking about our mosque, about especially Friday, Jumma prayer.
Fridays from when to when?
One to two.
One to two.
Please.
I could.
Kamal, you ask the chief.
Thank you.
Ask the one.
Yeah, I'll let you talk to chief more, and he already sent you one, uh, officer over there from one to two.
There's an answer. By the way, about the, um, the short-term rental issue, which is what we're gonna call it instead of Airbnb, because that's actually.
Okay, talk to them.
Um, this, uh, on Wednesday, the 27th, the legal committee meets at 6:15. So if you want to bring that to the legal committee, and they're already discussing it, and they will continue to discuss it.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have something, for sure. Thank you.
You're also doing sidewalks still there, too, right?
Sidewalks and STRs.
Anyone else? Tom?
In regards to the assessments, I believe that the, the appointment deadline is Wednesday?
Come on.
Is that correct, tomorrow? Tomorrow, and, um, you have to make your call between the hours of 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, if I'm not mistaken. So just so folks are mindful, uh, Gar, they did seem willing to help and they were there, you know, in an act of good faith, so I would encourage folks to seek them out.
Yes?
I just want to, uh, finish up all the thank you from the Polar Plunge since, uh, since the resolution was there tonight. Obviously, all the people who plunged, um, there's a lot of people, the people who donated, I think we had, how many donations, Peter?
Two hundred and sixty-seven.
Two hundred and sixty-seven donations, which is amazing. Over eighteen thousand dollars.
And it's all attached, I think the names are all attached to the resolution every year.
It's a huge list, but yeah, so there's a lot of people. The fire department put a huge amount of volunteer effort into this, it was really amazing, they really always come out, last year and this year. And lastly, Peter Frank is friends of Hudson Youth, uh, did an amazing job organizing, facilitating.
Uh, one last thing, I just want to, this, the, the assessment issue, what we're talking about right now, and what Calvinist brought up, is these are preliminary, it's the first step, you're gonna get a letter following the preliminary to say, this is maybe what we have recommended will happen, so, but that's not the end of it, after that, there's grievance. So this is a long, long process, and preliminary is just happening right now, and you can get an appointment, we get the call tomorrow, so anyways. It's complex, not easy, you have to be computer savvy, get a lawyer, that's, that's my recommendation.
As a reminder, uh, and Alderman, Maranti can correct me if I mistake, and, uh, at our last housing and transportation meetings, it was flyers distributed, there will be a meeting at the high school, March 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00, uh, the Housing Advisory Board, um, looking and reaching out to tenants of the city, so that will be a good day also to speak your concerns.
As a forum, there's gonna be a panel discussion, so, um, that information will be very valuable, especially for your rents, uh, your legal protections and, um, anything for rental questions can be asked on. In the library.
Motion to adjourn. Second? Um, there?
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.